All right. Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Appreciate you. Good morning, EMK.
Morning.
Morning. Morning. I am, for those, I know most of you know who I am, but I am Dr. Walker Gregory. I am your proud head of school of the Edward M. Kennedy Academy for Health Careers. Welcome. Let's give a round of applause to the EMK Trio Band, including Alex Vatato on bass, Charles Badala on keyboards, and Calvin Lamou on drums. Round of applause. All right. Where are my ninth graders? Scream. Where are my 10th graders? That's what I'm talking about. All right. Where are my 11th graders? Okay, seniors, show them how it's going. How's that? Appreciate you all. I just want to recognize a few folks who have been really instrumental in putting this program together. Kristin Driscoll, where is she? Wave your hand, Kristin. There she is, from Mass General Brigham. She's the director of the Bloomberg Health Career Initiatives at MGB. I also want to give a shout out to Kenesha Allen Daly. She is Boston Public School Principal Fellow and blessed to have her following me for the whole year. Thank you. Also want to recognize our director of athletics, Thomas Price. Where is this, the Price? Also want to recognize Shanira Lindsay. I don't know if she's here, but she was very instrumental in helping us reserve the Reggie Lewis Track in Athletic Center. But we do, yep, is she, well, but guess who's here? The president of RCC. Whoa, there he is. Dr. Justin Jefferson is the new president of RCC, and we thank him for allowing us to be in his space today. I also want to recognize the admin team. Here they are, stand up, admin team. EMK admin team. I can't do this job without them. Louder. Thank you. Thank you. Also want to recognize all EMK staff. Stand up. The best staff in the city of Boston. Give them a round of applause. We have a great program here for you today. I want to just welcome some of our staged guests. On my right, we have Mayor Wu here. She can wave. The best mayor in the city of Boston. We have Jenny Kane from Bloomberg Philanthropies. Wave. We have Laura Peabody, the general counsel of Mass General Brigham. We have Bill Walzak, the founder of EMK Academy for Health Careers. We have Mary Skipper, the best superintendent of the Boston Public Schools. And we have our own Priscilla Davila. On this significant day, September 11th, I want to warmly welcome our students, staff, and partners, particularly the Boston Public Schools, Mass General Hospital, and Bloomberg Philanthropies. Today marks the beginning of another promising school year and a day of deep reflection as we honor the memory of those lost in the tragic events of 9/11 23 years ago. A lot of you weren't even born. Oh, Jesus. We're reminded of the strength that comes from unity, compassion, and shared purpose. Let's just have a little moment of silence. Thank you. At EMK, we remain committed to building a future where empathy, care, and understanding are at the core of everything we do. This marks a pivotal moment in our school's history. We are thrilled to have a transformative partnership that would undoubtedly shape the future of our academy and the opportunities available to our students. In collaboration with Mass General Brigham, Bloomberg Philanthropies has awarded EMK an unprecedented $38 million grant, the largest grant in Boston Public Schools' history. This historic gift is a testament to our students' incredible potential and our educators' dedication. At EMK, we're honored to participate in this initiative, which will enhance our ability to provide a top-tier health careers education. With this generous support, we will expand our programs, enrich our curriculum, and offer our students unparalleled access to resources and experiences that will prepare them for success in health careers field. As we kick off this school year, I encourage all of our students to embrace this year with curiosity and determination. Please take advantage of the incredible opportunities that is going to come before you. Whether you're just starting your journey, ninth graders, with us, or returning to continue your studies, know that you're part of something truly special. Our dedicated faculty and staff are here to support you every step of the way, and together, we will achieve great things. Now, let's welcome to the podium to just share a few words of welcome back wisdom, Mayor Wu.
Good morning, EMK. How's it feel to be back at school? Well, I'm excited for school to be back. I'm so grateful to Dr. Karen Walker Gregory, an incredible leader, not only in our district, not only for our community, but nationally. I'm so thankful for you, your entire team, all of the educators who are gathered here today, and all of the special guests who've made this possible. I know we all talk about how we are only able to be here because we're standing on the shoulders of giants who have come before us. So I do want to recognize and just speak their names. Our head of school emeritus, Dr. Al Holland. Thank you for the years of leadership and service here. To Bill Walzak, who's been recognized already as one of the founders of the school, and Elmer Freeman. Thank you for creating space for the next generation of leadership. We are also joined here today by Eric Berg, the Boston Teachers Union. Thank you for presenting, all of our educators. To the best superintendent in the country, Superintendent Mary Skipper. Thank you and congratulations on a great first day of school and great first week. Actually, the day before school started, the superintendent and I and a lot of the top administrators in BPS went and knocked on doors of 300 students just to say hi, we're ready, we're excited to welcome you back. And at one of the doors, we met a young woman who said that she was about to start at EMK. And I'm not going to call her. I would say names, do they have any names? But I remember the look on the superintendent's face as she said, okay, well, you're going to be all set now. There's no better opportunity to make sure that you're going to meet your fullest potential. And so I want to thank Dr. Karen Walker Gregory and all the student body for always being so welcoming to the next generation of students who are coming after you at EMK as well. And thank you to Jenny, to Laura, to all of our partners who have made this historic partnership possible. We wouldn't be here without the vision and the leadership of Bloomberg Philanthropies and MGB to help EMK make history once more again. And finally, shout out to Dr. Audrey Lang, who is an alumna of the EMK, valedictorian of the class of 2015, who was also an inspiration and a reminder of what our EMK alums are doing in the community every day. So we're here today alongside representatives from the largest employer in our state, from our nation's leading philanthropies, and the incredible students, faculty, and staff at the Edward M. Kennedy Academy and City Leadership, because together, we are doing something incredible. We're taking an already world-class school, imagining everything that's possible, and then pushing it one step further. For nearly three decades, EMK has prepared Boston students for college and healthcare careers. And now, thanks to all of you, we are connecting our students, students who know they want to care for our communities, to the single largest employer in Massachusetts and one of the best healthcare institutions in the world. There will be new pathways focused on some of the most in-demand career tracks, surgery and medical imaging to biotech, hands-on learning all year long, from after-school programs to fifth-quarter learning and career counseling support for every single student. And we are doubling the size of EMK to 800 students. These resources will create more opportunities for more students than ever before, and the impact will be felt for generations. So today, we're kicking off a new school year, but really, we're kicking off a new chapter in our city's healthcare and general history. This year, we'll be making upgrades to the Lincoln Building and getting it ready to serve as a temporary lower campus for the EMK next year, which will allow us to really start growing the campus. And by the time those incoming freshmen are ready to move to the upper campus, there'll be a new permanent home for the entire EMK community to learn and grow together. And I just want to say for all those who are watching or those who are going to take this news back to your family and friends, while this partnership is really one of a kind, we are going to take what we learn here and make sure that schools across the district also get some of that magic, because this is really special. And the rest of the country is watching and looking to Boston, looking to the EMK as a leading light on an innovative, career-connected education. So as we continue to open the doors on beautiful new school buildings, from the Josiah Quincy Upper School in Chinatown, the PJ Kennedy in East Boston, the Philbrick and Sumner in Rosendale, Horace Mann School for the Deaf and Hard of Hearing, as we continue to add new AP courses in African-American Studies, pre-calculus, and research, and as we add more early college and career pathways across our high schools, thank you once again to President Jefferson and RCC for being one of those important, important partners here. We are looking to all of you as our North Star of possibility, as the proof of what we can accomplish when we bet big on our young people and bring together the unbeatable resources and talent that are already right here in Boston. So thank you again to everyone who made this possible. Have a wonderful school year, and we will see you lots as this historic development unfolds.
Another round of applause for Mayor Wu. Next to the podium is going to be our wonderful, amazing superintendent at Boston Public Schools, Mary Skipper.
So when Dr. Karen Walker said we were going to be at Reggie Lewis, which is amazing, and thank you to the president for hosting us, I said, that's a really big venue for EMK, right? And she said, oh, you haven't heard what my kids can do. So can we hear what EMK's spirit is right now? I think she was right. Small and mighty and about to get bigger. So that's awesome. You know, we're here to celebrate such a great thing. I come from the high school world, and today's the day we celebrate the city of Boston and the village kind of wrapping around EMK for what was already an amazing school. Today, Bloomberg Philanthropies is making good on a commitment to you, to the students, $38 million to help make your school even better for more students. It's also where all of the city partners are coming together. Mass Brigham, Mass General Brigham, as well as partners from all around the state coming to bear for you, EMK. And what does that mean? What it means is that what you're about to get is what we want every student in BPS to have, and that is big, big opportunities. What this means for you as a student, whether you're ninth grader, 10th grader, 11th grader, is that you will start to feel the ability to have workplace experiences. Make sure that you can have experience in early college and start getting your credits so that you can graduate and graduate into college already ahead. Making sure that you have the opportunity after school, during the summer, wherever you are, whenever, that EMK, you can say, I'm learning and I'm earning. That's not something all BPS kids have yet. That is something we are committed to. But today, you are getting that. You are beginning that. And so you really are trailblazers to show us the way, myself, the mayor, our partners, of what this looks like. Everybody comes together, the most important folks in here, which is our students. So congratulations. See the moment, because you're getting it. Most students aren't yet, but will. This is your chance to sort of show that we're still. I couldn't be happier as superintendent or crowder that EMK is the trailblazer in this. And to all of our partners, you're making this happen. So thank you very, very much. I want to leave the podium before giving a huge shout out to one of our best school leaders who leads not only with her head in everything she does, but most importantly, with her heart. Dr. Karen Walker.
All right. Next, who's going to be at the podium is probably Jenny Kane from Bloomberg Philanthropies.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Mayor Wu, for your incredible leadership on this work. When I was last with you and Principal Walker Gregory, it was in January when we announced our $38 million grant to help transform EMK. It is so amazing to actually see students here representing our first class in the reimagined model and the rest of your incredible school. You all signify a groundbreaking collaboration between the city of Boston and Mass General to connect students to many good, well-paid jobs right in your backyard. Jobs in medical imaging, medical lab science, sterile processing, in addition to nursing and emergency medicine. These are real careers with long-term potential to keep earning, learning, and growing while making positive contributions to the community around you. The possibilities are truly endless, and it's up to you how far you go. So grab this opportunity and take every chance you can to learn from your educators at EMK and from professionals at Mass General. They are here for you to make sure you succeed. And to the larger Boston community and partners, you represent the first step in Bloomberg Philanthropies' larger initiative to open 10 new schools around the country over the next few years. You are a pioneer and leading the way in our work to expand options and opportunities for our students. Boston can become a national model, not just for the geographies in our initiative, but to cities, hospitals, and schools around the country. And in a few short years, instead of 400 students here, there'll be 800 students, and that will be super exciting. So as my boss, Mike Bloomberg, says, don't mess it up. And now, I'd like to introduce an essential partner without whom this project would be just an idea, Chief Legal Officer and General Counsel at Mass General, Laura Peabody.
Good morning, everybody. This is so exciting. This was about a year ago. This was just an idea. It was something that the incredible generosity of the Bloomberg Foundation thought might work. And then I had the unbelievable privilege of talking with the mayor's office and Secretary Skipper, who, they love Boston students. They live every day for you guys to be successful. And of course, your unbelievable head of school, Dr. Karen Walker. It's been a real privilege to work with this whole team. So here we are today. So, you know, I work in healthcare. I've been a healthcare lawyer since about 1988. And while I don't provide direct care to patients, I do support all of the doctors and other clinicians, lab technicians, everybody who provides care to patients, and also to the communities that we serve. We have a van here that you should all go and look at, where we actually bring care to the communities in Boston to make it easier for people to get care. And I want to tell you, it feels really great every day to know that this is what I'm supporting. And we hope all of you will have an opportunity to come and work with us, because we need all of you. So the program is not only to create valuable job opportunities, but also to expand a more diverse workforce across the Mass General Brigham system. And that's why we need all of you. You may have heard that hospitals across the country are facing serious labor shortages, especially for clinicians and providers of color. Every day, our dedicated health care workers are confronted with growing demands and challenges, making this need more urgent. We are looking forward to your site visits, providing hands-on educational opportunities on our hospital campuses in the upcoming year. And today, we encourage you to check out our community care van and our simulation lab activities that will be held right after lunch. We know that for you, this is just the beginning. So we pledge to be there to support you in any way we can throughout your years at this incredible school. And to the students, on behalf of everyone at Mass General Brigham, we wish you enormous success in the upcoming school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you. All right. Our last speaker is a message from our student council, Priscilla Davila.
All right. Good morning, everyone. Welcome, staff and students of Edward M. Kennedy Academy for Health Careers, Bloomberg's Mass General, and our team partners. As we begin the new school year on this solemn day of remembrance, let's take a moment to honor the lives lost, oops, sorry, the lives lost on September 11, 2001. Let us reflect on the strength that emerged in the aftermath. The resilience, compassion, and unity shown by communities across the nation serve as remnants of how important it is for us as future healthcare professionals to embody those same values. This year holds great promise for us all. Whether we're preparing for college, internships, or stepping into leadership roles, we are shaping the future of healthcare in our communities. As a candidate for class president, my goal is to foster the spirit of collaboration and service. Together with our amazing partners, we can create opportunities that empower every student to succeed and give back to communities that have supported us. Thank you to Mass General Hospital and Bloomberg Philanthropies for your continued support and to our amazing teachers and staff for guiding us on this journey. Let's lead this school year one of growth, unity, and positive change. Wishing everyone success and inspiring year ahead.
See ya. See ya. Round of applause for Priscilla. I just want to make sure we give a shout out to, there's lots of people in the audience today, our EMK Board of Trustees. If they're in the audience, just wave your hand. We got, yeah, welcome them. We did recognize Bill Walzak, but I don't know if Elmer Freeman is here, who's another founder of our school. Elmer Freeman. I'm not sure if he's here, but wanted to give him a shout out. We have Albert Holland, who was the former EMK head of school. Raise your hand. There you go. We have Eric Berg, the BTU president. Give a shout out. There you go. I don't know if Audrey's here. Audrey, Dr. Audrey Lang, is she here? Audrey is the class president, no, actually, she was the valedictorian of the school of the class of 2015. She was a member of student council, and now she's an MD. Give her a round of applause. Now, we've got a nice little surprise to for you. We are so blessed to have Coach Stevenson. All right, there he is. And the EMK cheerleaders. They're going to be performing for us today. And we have Maria. Sorry, Maria. A graduate of our school who's assisting with the cheerleaders. And how would you like to handle this? Coach, it's on you. Ready? Come on up, Maria.
Hey, guys. My name is Maria. I'm the assistant coach for the EMK cheerleaders. I used to go here. I graduated class of 2023. So before we start, can we have all the cheerleaders get off the bleachers and just make your way towards the faculty? Thank you.
All right. Another round of applause for our cheerleaders! All right. Big shout out to Coach Stevenson. I remember when, we had none, and now we have some. So I appreciate you, Coach. So today, we have several activities planned for you. We talked a little bit about the MGB Simulation Lab, where you're going to have an opportunity to, um... I believe we have Dr. Nadia Kejijje? I'm pronouncing the name, I probably butchered that, sorry. It's going to be like a simulation lab, so you're going to have an opportunity to see that today. You'll see life-size mannequins to learn about medicine and healthcare technology. We have the MGB Community Care Van. MGB cares about the community. The van addresses the social issues of health. Patients are screened for issues related to housing, access to healthy food, and personal safety, and connected with several resources. We have a photo booth for you. Yeah, we have a photo booth. We also have MGB swag giveaway table, so you'll get some of that today. And we're bringing back, for the first time in a few years, the extracurricular activities signup table. So, yeah. Everyone will be required to sign up for one, at least one extracurricular activity. We believe this will provide a sense of belonging. We have the boys' basketball. I'm just going to go through the list, there's a lot of them. Flag football coming. We have Boys to Men Club, Girls Club, Girls Basketball, Cheerleading, Boys and Girls Track. We have, we have Boys Baseball and Girls Softball. We partner with Brighton High School with Football, Girls Soccer, Boys Soccer, and Volleyball. We have the Chess Club, the Debate Team, the National Honor Society, the Student Council, the Gender and Sexualities Alliance, the Prom, the Yearbook, the Music Club, the Science and Engineering Club, the Art Club, the Jubilee, Drama Club. And we have a new club by a new teacher who's here today, Spoken Word Poetry Club. We're excited to have that. We also have, you know, we also just say, um... Well, I'll give, I'll wait to the end, but we also have food trucks for you today. On three, I want you to say, "Thank you, Jenny." Thank you, Jenny! We also have Ms. Lowny, Amy Lowny. Whoa, some of you remember her! She was a former EMK teacher and now the owner of Juicy Greens. She will be providing complimentary Juicy Green nourishments for everyone. So we are super happy to have her. All right. I'm going to need a little assistance moving from here. We're going to do, because everybody's not going to go to the food truck at once. You know how that works. Do you want to just talk a little bit of how that's going to work? Just to give you a little orientation of where you are, the extracurricular activities are behind us. The Simulation Lab, go ahead.
Hi, EMK. So I'm just going to tell you where you're going. You're going to go in terms of ninth and 10th and 11th and 12th. So for ninth and 10th, you're going to start with the food trucks outside. So... It's okay. You all, 11th and 12th, you get the extracurricular activities. So ninth and 10th, you all are going to start at the food trucks. We're going to have Jamaican Me Crazy for the ninth graders. You all should have your tickets. If not, you'll get them from your teacher. Fresh Brew's Generation for the 10th grade students. In terms of, wait, one second, hold on. Hold on a second. So then we're going to have the 11th and 12th graders. We're going to have Cohort One. You're going to start at the MBG Simulation Lab right here. Cohort Two, you're going to go out this door and you're going to go to the MGB Community Care Van. Cohort Three, you're going to start at the photo booth, which is back here behind the curtains. And Cohort Four, extracurricular activities. So Madam Jean will let you know when it's time to rotate to the next station. So let's move out. Remember, ninth and 10th, you're going to go to the food trucks first.
All right. Another round of applause for our guests. Enjoy the day!